Welcome to the first regular meeting of October of 2025. And superintendent speakers have four days prior to today, providing each and the board member a packet of information in reference to the items on tonight's agenda. This packet is for our review and to have questions or concerns addressed. At this time, I would like to call this meeting to order with a moment of silence. Our vision is to provide inviting and challenging learning opportunities for everyone. The first thing that I were going to do is the North Spencer County School Corporation Library Endowment will present a check to the corporation in the amount of $12,026.
So I'm going to put probably Mrs. Sturmer and Mrs. Birch and Mrs. Jaycee on the spot. So you guys want to talk about how things that we've done for the corporation with this money?
I'll start with how we divide it. So once it leaves here, we give it to her treasurer and she divides it six ways. So two parts go with the here details and then the four over here we can share. And then from there, we leave it to basically Angie and Janet's discretion to spend it on materials, new materials for the library. So it has kept, over the years, has kept our libraries in great shape and in current something. And so we feel like we keep creating things for our kids. So our libraries are in good shape because of this endowment.
And we make sure that they're printed materials for the library. So I know, I know students at my school that were there. I always ask them how they're doing when they're reading digital versus print. And all the requests that I get, they always still want to have that print book. We do have digital resources and we get those as well. But most of the money, I'd say, from this will go to print books. And it does provide several good, real resources. Or even ones that students recommend. So it's always a good source for us to be able to do that if we have a headlock.
All right. Thank you very much to the North Spencer Library Endowment. We appreciate it. Why don't we, I think it'd be good if we have a picture here for this. So I think we'll come over here. Amy Lincoln, take a nice photo.
Shift this way just a little bit. Yeah, yeah, just go this way.
Okay, the next item tonight will be Jan Jaything, who will present on North Spencer Assessment Data and Alter Position and Director of Learning at North Spencer. I know this is your favorite competition.
All right. I always like to start big pictures. So I know we can't use our new I Word. So we'll start with this I-Learn dot com, which is a big one. Because this kind of gives you an overview of our core programs are doing, basically, through 12. So this is our, a history of our ISEF results. And since we started I-Learn in 2019, I always like to leave that last year of ISEF on there from the 2018, 19, I'm sorry, 2017, 2018 year. Just because there has, for those of you who haven't been around for a long time, is to see these numbers and how they have trended. You know, so if you look at 2018, I go with that ISEF numbers. And North Spencer was very accustomed to seeing pass rates near that range, that mark on the state test at the end of the year. Okay. And then you can also look at the state. And then if you go and you look at how that state average and that North Spencer average correlates, there was a significant decrease. So when they introduced I-Learn, they raised the expectations. So ISEF used to be kind of that, that core, almost that, that minimum expectation to be grade level. Okay. Fifty percentiles, if you were a statistics, some number person. But when I-Learn came around, the cut scores at the end of the year for given grade levels is anywhere between about sixty-two, sixty-second percentile and about sixty-seventh percentile on some grade levels. Okay. So that's why you see that difference more. So they, they raise that bar, they raise that cut score. So you always have to keep this relative. So this was, for our teachers, this was kind of morale filler when it first happened. Because we're used to seeing numbers up here. So I always like to go over to that white box, just so you can kind of see how we're moving. So, you know, we are in, basically, if you look at language arts and math, we are in the top 10 percent in language arts and the top 5 percent in student behavior in all schools than our I-Learn source, which is pretty exceptional. You know, so we're up there with the ratings of the Evansville Diocese and our, the Indiana Diocese of schools. You know, so we're, we're able to kind of maintain pace with schools that have a much different clientele of kids. Schools that get to choose their kids. So we're, we're very proud of our teachers and our students for the work that is done there. I haven't had a chance, we don't get a lot of information back on science. We got a significant dip, you can see that. We're no longer in the top 10 percent in science that they changed the tests last year. So we don't really have anything to compare it to yet. So hopefully I'll be able to dig into that and give you more information on, on that one as that, as that rolls along. Then if you look at grade 11, and I, I put the history of how some SAT pain in the play in 2022 as our state test for our high schoolers, for our grade 11 kids. The high school has done a really nice job of targeting their professional development and really looking to that SAT because, you know, that's a college prep test. And we know that not all of our kids are college bound. You know, so that's a pretty high expectation and bounty test for a college bound kid. And then you start to put it in front of kids more not. You know, that's not their path, not their, their, their language choice. But we have an incredible way there. If you look, by again, we're very, very well, we've gotten better every year. We've gone from being 131st to 48th in language arts. So we're up in that top 15 percent for language arts and our math. Same thing, it's seen as trend. We've got, we've got a little better each year as we, as we, as we know what to re-engage with kids ready for that top 5 percent for language arts and math. It's striking for North Spencer schools, so. So big snapshot, this is, I think, David, there's nothing you can do about this, right? You know, I mean, you know, we know what the standards are and that kind of thing. But once it's done, it's not like you can go back and re-teach and re-test. Okay. That's not the case for the rest of them. Okay. So living there. So to make those numbers trend in the right direction, we look a lot around the year. So these are our formative assessments, so what we look at throughout the year. Okay, so I always like to start where we have the biggest picture of kids. So I-Learn, this is assessment that has served us very well in North Spencer. We used to, prior to this year, give this three times a year. But I, Indiana wrote out I-Learn checkpoints this year. Okay. So last year, when we piloted it in one grade in each of, of the four elementarys in the middle school and did I-Learn three times a year, we found that we were losing almost two weeks of instruction to testing for some of these kids. So they would be losing several class periods for I-Learn. And we had them losing class period for that I-Learn checkpoint three times a year. And, you know, assessment's great, it gives us great information. That's a lot of lost instruction. So we backed off. We are only going to give I-Learn at the beginning of the year in grades three through six because it sets their individual learning path, which is the pre- and active path that takes however they did on this beginning of the year test. So I went ahead and shared that data with you, just so you can kind of see how we're starting off the year. So as you, you can kind of look at that 25, 26, which is the last row there on that, that top table. And then what I always look at with this data, you see that yellow highlighted? Okay, that's the same group of kids. Okay. So I want to see that achievement back hopefully as, you know, to, I want to see those kids get stronger as they start that year and as they start to gain more and more knowledge. So you do see some little fluctuations there in language arts. But that math, we see that continuing to increase as they, they start, that same group starts to be. So you can do that for other grades. So if you haven't given a particular grade, you can then track that. But those schools no longer getting that, so I'm going to share that. Okay. But then assessment added here, Dibbles. Dibbles. So when you hear the buzzword Indiana is that science of reading. Okay, this is the assessment that kind of tests that. Okay, this is how we track that, that those early literacy skills. This is what makes kids great readers, this is what lays that strong foundation. So we can add those grade SAT results over here at the high school. So basically the same thing, starting off very strong. The window for this, you always want to pay closest attention to our P2 kids, right? Because the bulk of this assessment, developmentally, skills that are on math test are developed for most kids by grade two. Who continue to re-engage and, and through grade six, but there's that piece. That kindergarten class, I know we had other classes. If you look at our incoming kindergartners, these are our true public babies. And we're feeling it. Their, their data, you can tell that, you know, they were home, they were home with their parents. So maybe it was just a little bit different for them than it was towards the moments of those early 40 years. Language development can birth the age three is huge. So we are seeing some, all kinds of different things that we've not noticed before in our kindergarten class. So it's been kind of interesting. So we, our kindergarten teachers are having an exciting year trying to figure out these challenges. But that'll be an interesting group to watch over the next few years. Next, this next test, the NWA Math Team, this test's only comprehension. Okay, so a lot of districts use the Math Worth Test, which is kind of like I-Learn, it's a long literacy test that does a multiple of schools. Reading screeners treat just comprehension. North Spencer feels it's very important to have something to track kids from the minute they become comprehenders, they can break around grade two. It's a really, that's, we want them to grow. So, you know, that, that 231 is a magic number. If kids can comprehend a back-rig score, which is a let's say, of close to 1,300 to 1,290, yeah, it's a 1,290. That's not what they need to be proficient on that SAT. That's where a lot of those passages in, that they're asked to, to read and comprehend and respond to your own SAT. So we want to make sure kids continue to grow there. So this was a new assessment last year. It replaced SRI, which had some growing pains. For the most part, we're seeing a lot of similar trends in that data. And it's been, it's been a good resource to group and vulnerable instruction learning. These last two, they're just kind of more FYI, are free reduced. They've got a lot of my Title I reports for our Title I grades that we get and kind of deciding, you know, we're, we're going to distribute those funds for our Title I buildings or Christine and Peter now. So we can see the numbers here kind of justify that. So we want to be, if, if another school is going to jump on, they have to get up that 35 percent for more than two consecutive years. So we've not really had that in any of our other buildings, they do not believe. Yet. We've had some little blips for a tight two years, our, did not exceed that. So, but big jobs, if you look at the last 10 years, our, I don't know if it was 22, so. And finally, the VDA assessment. Give a real that is not going to be that stuff for that assessment that we did. This is the assessment we have to give all, any student, whether they enroll in North Spencer and they mark a box other than English on that home members survey. They automatically enter and enter this program and they must be assessed later. We have to track their, their language acquisition skills. So this is the language acquisition test that the students take. Once they reach a level five, we can test out of the program, we monitor it for two years. So we have had some nice gains here, we've done some adjusting. We saw kind of a big difference to be there in 22, 23 in the number of kids who were either growing or staying the same in their language proficiency. So we did some adjusting with Laura Markin and Laura Stroff, AR, ELL, teachers record. So those adjustments have seemed to be working well, the way we have shifted those around. So, you know, that we kind of track the state of our, that, that group of students. Another trend here, just to kind of note, the number of newcomers. So those are students who come straight from a, from not the United States and enter our school. Okay, so for two years are considered complete newcomers. So they, we're not accountable for them on our I-Learn test in that, in that window of time. But we've had an influx, Jujirati, hopefully I'm saying that right. So our Indian families, you know, that are moving into the area, the members who see their primary in Nancy Hanks. They make up a big chunk of our, our newcomers the past two years. And then we have also had an influx of, of kids from, from Mexico. And they started to come to our middle school and our high school. So getting those kids to grow is much different than getting a kid that starts with an attorney and they're kind of that closer, like, deal. So it's just another piece. And so for my data, data's a big part of what I do as a job. And, you know, so my job is Director of Learning. It really guides a lot of the conversations I have with principals and, and teachers. I do a lot of, probably teachers sort classroom data, to group students and decide what, who needs them more. So that, I still get my student mix. It's, I love my job, I just, it's paralyzing a lot. So I love that part of this job. I talk with teachers a lot about our data too. Especially if it's a large class, when we talk, okay, what are our ELL numbers? What does that look like? What are our free reduced numbers? Should we make smart decisions, you know, about the work for next sports? And, and spending our dollars wisely at that district level. But my major's probably that classroom piece. So that's a big chunk of my job. Federal grants, Indiana has shifted all of their grants to a new portal called UNA or ESUVIS. It has not been an efficient and smooth transition. So as of right now, we don't have any of our federal funds coming in, into the nine weeks of school because of the approval process. So they're telling us mid-October, so last Wednesday. So I'm just hoping they can get a bunch of information on that. So the ELL grant, the English learning grant, don't even have that application yet. So we've found out a, an application amount, I think that came last week, Thursday or Friday. So hopefully that will open up soon. So that whole process has been delayed, which is, it's the fact that it wasn't getting to the school year. And I'm trying to support teachers and principals. Good to hear that. Answer everybody?
Are those grants on the state or federal level?
So the, all of the title rates. So I am Title I, which is, I think that's based on population below the poverty line in your area. So that's Title I. And two is focused on professional development. So that's what we do for our curriculum readings, our evaluation trainings that we do. Our metro program, we've written that into our grant group for, for this year. So that's Title Two. Title Three is the non-English grant, those are all, those are three federal grants. Okay, so that's Title. And then the high ability grant is also out on that ESUVIS platform, the back to state grant. So that's right. Got it? Anything else?
You were talking about I-Learn. And you said that, that, you know, talking about the amount of time in the classroom and talking about them being taken for the assessment. Did you say that the state, those checkpoints are regulated by the state?
Yes, so that is, so now our formative assessment grant is, that's a state grant that Andy Birch writes for us. Backing now would use for your dyslexia screener, which is that Dibbles assessment. We use that in North Spencer for that. That, that formative grant for that, it used to pay for it and it will not. We've got it anymore. And that will be for PSAT 9 and 10. But it's not, so that, that chunk of three through major doesn't contribute anything for that.
So we'll still administer I-Learn.
Yes, we still have the curriculum materials, our textbooks that we have, A grades three through six. Which is why we still gave it, because that digital piece. When kids, teachers are pulling small groups, that digital piece, we've seen a lot of success with that. And the teachers can go and adjust that. I-Learn has also been great. They put out I-Learn checkpoint playlists that are directly aligned to the state assessment. So some of our teachers were assigning it, keeping up to the test. We're kind of playing with that this year since it's baseline here, kind of get kids ready. And then some of them are saving it now that we are starting to get it. Most of them are, they've been starting last Wednesday. I know Ms. Winkle and I were together today presenting it, we together, and she's giving it tomorrow. So it's two weeks right now when teachers are giving it. So some of them are holding off to give it as they arrange it. So we're wanting to see, because it's, it's a national standard, that playlist is. So I can adjust that kids' path. So if it will be on, say dividing to get your next two to numbers, I can put that into your pack and sign that, and it will give them feedback on that automatically. So it's, it's a great instructional resource that we have for teachers. It usually breaks assessment data, but now to, which the data we're getting back from checkpoints is not as detailed, so it's, we have a state class, it's a little frustrating for teachers. Probably make no sense out of that information we're giving.
Does the SAT test, does that include like a retake, like a senior that retakes it?
It does not. So that is at March date when all the units go in to that, that test together. So, you know, if a student opts to take multiple attempts, that does not. So that's just, that's that number that it takes. Or they had, some kids take it before that date. So that might be their second attempt, but that's the one state used for.
A lot of information.
Thank you very much.
I deeply love this one session. Thanks for having me. Thank you. David Wanniger?
Present.
Wayne Rinkman?
Present.
Jennifer Rich?
Present.
Chris Moore?
Present.
Jennifer Aldridge?
Present.
Brittany Giles?
Present.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of previous meeting. I'll make a motion to approve.
Sir?
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is treasurer's report.
Included in your folder for this meeting is the treasurer's report along with the statement of funds, along with preschool balances that we're closely monitoring. Also, I have compared some funds in and there for, for October, when we moved back. Preschool, obviously, we pay attention to that, we track that separately now. Just, we'll combine everybody and track it separately. So it's good to see from August to September, we've kind of stabilized the cash balance there. So if there's any questions, we'll be happy to try to answer them. If not, I recommend you approve the treasurer's report as.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is consideration of claims.
The claims for this meeting, 108,036 to 108,136 totaling $786,42. There are cents. As we look at the claims, Mr. Wanniger will be to extend on 108,131. And also, recall this question a few meetings back. If you would look at claim 108,078, the Exceptional Children's Cooperative. I think a question was, how's Billy work for the cooperative? Obviously, it's, we're the joint, we're the joint services agreement with them. So that is, so basically, the, the claim that was seen, I believe, September 8th. And this claim right here covered the whole entire year. North Spencer, for whatever reason, has just paid everything upfront. So one on, the claim on September 8th and this claim here total for the year. Well, the cooperative services, so I just want to, I want to keep it in my basket. So just want to follow up on that. Any other questions on the claims? I'll make a motion to approve.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Annie and I talked before, I think we're going to go ahead and start signing these after we do them. It just makes more sense so far.
So.
And next item on the agenda is personnel considerations. We have no leave, no resignation.
For the resignations, uh, my Christie Elementary Special Education Teacher, Aubrey Roster resigns from her position. Also, a Christie After School Assistant, Larry Smith submits her resignation. David Turner, Instructional Assistant, Ashley Shepherd submits her resignation. And Nancy Hanks, Mainland Instructor, Philip Temple submits his letter of resignation slash retirement. Recommend you accept these resignations.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Appointments?
We have two coaches to hire, uh, one at the high school, one at the middle school. At the high school, girls tennis head coach, Mr. Engelbrecht. And Mrs. Kress recommends that Matt Bell be appointed to this position. And then Eric Chills Middle School, seventh grade girls basketball coach. Uh, Coach Brown and Mr. Engelbrecht recommend that Justin Holder be assigned to that position. Recommend you approve those appointments.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Others?
Uh, this, uh, this is a leave that was previously approved by the board. This is coverage for that leave. So I, I've written notes there of what, uh, our plan for covering that. So I recommend you, uh, consider this official notification who will call her and approve the coverage as.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Patron comments? No patron comments, so move on to old business.
Um, under old business, transfer from education fund to operations fund. This is our monthly transfer of eighty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Uh, we have approval to transfer up to one million for the twenty-five year. Um, resolution signed. It will September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four meeting allow us to do this. Right, we approve transfer of eighty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars from education to operations.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. New business?
Under new business, uh, this is a little overdue. I apologize for that. But, uh, we have, uh, starting in the twenty-four, twenty-five year, basically entered into a lease agreement with the town of Dale uh, to conduct preschool, um, in the, uh, upper level, two rooms of the D C C. So that, I'm kind of still biased. So what you have for you, um, it is correct. One, you may have noticed that it was backwards on the original, uh, link. But if you go and your board meeting access to the D C C D agreement, it was less or less, it was backwards than it was. But that lease agreement, um, is good by Bruce Sisler, uh, who represents us and the town of Dale. So I, if you guys approve this, I will sign it myself and then take it to Cindy tomorrow. She has a meeting tomorrow night or she later. So I recommend you approve this lease agreement.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item, I'm going to request that November tenth, uh, board meeting, that we move the time, change the time on that uh, so that we can attend the ISPA Fall Regional Meeting that evening. So because of the Fall Regional Meeting, I'm going to ask we move the board meeting to twenty P M. Recommend you approve this request.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item, uh, approval of the twenty-six, twenty-seven school calendar. I've linked that in spreadsheet for you. If you have questions, we have to answer them. But otherwise, I recommend you approve the calendar as.
Submit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, I need to open a hearing in reference to the teacher contract. It's a tentative agreement hearing. So I need to, if there's any, I'd like to make a comment about the teacher agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Since there are no comments, our meeting is, the hearing has been closed.
Uh, before we move on, I would, Corey, the tech release here would like to comment. Uh, Corey, Noah Peak, Jeremy Clea, bargaining committee, Veronica Hobbs, all wonderful to work with. So thank you for that. Um, hopefully, I think we're both happy with this. Happy we, we got through it, right?
It looks like you were all new. And so it was a learning experience for all of us, but a really positive experience as well.
And also Jennifer, Dave and Chris. I didn't mean to leave you guys out, sorry.
Okay, buddy.
Thank you for giving your time that evening. It was appreciated.
And the next item, the intent to purchase buses.
Yeah, I, so I, I kept it on there, but we're going to table that to the next meeting. And let me just tell you quickly what that is. So because it takes so long to get school buses, um, we have to basically right now start moving. So we just had our budget process approved. You guys approved bus replacement. That's not over with. Um, so we have to get the process moving. So next meeting, I will bring specs for, uh, basically the type of bus that we get and a letter that just says we intend to purchase three school buses. Here's what the approximate cost will be. So that's what I'll be at October twenty-seventh meeting. And ironically enough, today Scott Wannier delivered the news. We just had a bus go down. It's, yeah, about an over. So, um, we, I was a little cautious. Or I didn't know if three was the right number to get. And in retrospect, it was absolutely the perfect number to get. Because this bus had a little life in it yet. It was one of those propane buses that, uh, I thought initially sounded great. But that was only for grilling. Anything with bus. So, uh, so anyways, it's.
I'm sorry.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you.
You've lived this life, but.
About ten years, twelve years. Twelve years is a route, life. Uh, doesn't mean you can't get some life out of it otherwise, like E C A type stuff potentially. Um, and it would cost about twenty thousand to fix it.
How many years have they had? You said ten.
Ten.
Wow.
We have four. Uh, two are, two, yes, two are ten years old, uh, and two are eight years old. Um, they don't cause problems, but they're very difficult to, to give them service. Okay, so Scott can do some things, but if there's anything out of line, somebody, Indianapolis is basically your call. So it used to be Rooksers worked on, but they stopped working on that. So. So anyways, I'll bring that to you, uh, at the next meeting.
Next item on the agenda is requests.
Does anybody have any questions on field trips?
It's quite a good one.
Yeah, I keep Todd busy. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Professional leave, we have none at this time. Use of facilities?
Again, any questions on facilities? I'd, I recommend you approve, uh, those requests.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Superintendent's report?
Just a couple of things tonight. One, uh, this is a message from Mrs. Kress. Uh, Mrs. Kress and Mr. Engelbrecht took a group of students, high school students, to an I H S double A event in Enzo North. It's probably been at least two, three weeks ago now. Uh, they had a great time. And then, uh, Kate said probably the best time as part of it was they went to lunch and were able to have some good food, one. Uh, two, the conversation about, uh, basically student athlete leadership group at the high school, starting that within the high school. So had beginning conversations on that. So I just want to, uh, commend Kate and Jason first of all for taking them. But, uh, that was something that Jason was, is very passionate about. It's good to see that he's, uh, starting that here at Eric Chills. Um, it would be so, I, I just want to write, uh, basically talk about two situations here. Uh, Jason, at the end of the fall sports season, is going to give me a complete list of all conference sectional, conference selections, all the different things that go into, uh, go into a season. He's going to have that to share with us. But we do have right now two groups, um, moving on. Um, Brayden Marshall, uh, Brayden Ox and Marshall Schneider, uh, are at the state level in tennis. And I believe that's the end of this week. Yep. And then boy soccer went sectional and will play Wednesday. So it just real, they moved on already. So I just wanted to kind of specifically mention that and say congratulations to them. Best of luck, because I keep moving on. Uh, the other thing was, uh, parent teacher conferences. I, I got around to all those conferences and it's really good to see how, uh, how many people come in and, and come to our schools and talk to our teachers. I, if you look at the digital copy of the agenda notes, you look at the superintendent's report. I did put the percentages in there. No reason to not share that aloud. They were all in the nineties, uh, ninety percents above. So it was good to see that. High school, middle school is hard to track in terms of percentages because, just because it is. Uh, they know how many people attended. But some of them, basically at the middle high school, they commonly go to numerous teachers. So it's, it's just a little more difficult to track. Kate Meredith, Bill said that they're very busy. That looked like him from what I can tell. So that's good. We want parents in, we want them to talk to our teachers and we want them to see our schools. So, uh, thanks to everybody who was involved in parent teacher conferences.
No others? I'll ask our adjournment of this meeting so we can go into executive session.
I'll move to the chair. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And we are adjourned at six forty-two.